This time, we'd ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a seat. This time, I'd ask that we observe a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas. Thank you and good evening. We begin tonight on October 1st. With the agenda this evening, we're going to talk about the MCAS scores. I know, Mr. Vittorioso, you've been asking for the last few months about how we're going to do, and we're here tonight to tell you how the district is done. We're going to begin with a short PowerPoint, which will walk you through that. Mr. Bukarski is ready with the projector. Do you have lights, or some lights? The MCAS scores came back about two weeks ago. We're proud to announce we had success throughout our schools in Lawrence as a district. After several years of declines in English, Language Arts, our test scores are back up. In mathematics, not only are they up, but they're the highest ever achieved by the district. And we believe, when you combine the test scores together, that we may be, if not the, among the most improved districts in Massachusetts. So, congratulations to our principals, to our teachers, to our students, and to our parents, and to the school committee for all your efforts over the last year and a half to bring about changes in the district. I want to be clear, we've got a lot more work to do. This is a great first effort, but there is much more to do. I'll give you one example. Our proficiency rate in English has been flat for the last few years, and we've got to get more kids into proficient. Now, the reality is, is that we had many children improve out of failing and into needs improvement this year, but the next step, obviously, is to get our students from needs improvement into proficient or even advanced. So, there's much work to do. I'm going to go through the highlights with you, and then we'll take any questions that you may have. As I said, the test scores are up in both English and mathematics. Any way you look at it, whether it's absolute performance or growth, our math growth was the highest of any Gateway District in Massachusetts this year. We saw significant improvements at the school level virtually across the board, and it's a real testament to the hard work of everyone. It's a testament particularly to the teachers and students who use more time giving up their vacations to get extra practice in, who really worked on their lessons. It's a testament to the people in the curriculum office who helped us reform some of the curriculum efforts to make sure we were in line with the MCAS assessment. And it's a testament to the parents who have worked so hard with their children at home. So, we wanted to thank all those people, as well as the school committee and many other supporters that got us this great result. If you look at this slide here, what you'll see is the growth is up. It's up from 43 in 2012 to 47 this year. Ultimately, we want to be above 50. That's where we're trying to get, which means we'll be actually closing achievement gaps. The mathematic growth is the highest this district has ever seen, and I believe it's the highest of the Gateway Cities this year, where we went from 40 to 57. A different way to look at this slide, when you talk about English Language Arts and you look at the different cities, people like to compare us to different places. This is the change in English growth. You see, some districts actually went down in their growth, some were flat and had no growth, some had smaller growth, and then there were a group of schools that had fairly robust growth, including Lawrence, along with Revere, Methuen, Fitchburg, Fall River, and Boston, had some more stronger growth in English. In mathematics, the chart is even more impressive. If you look at those same schools, many comparable districts, we lead the league in the change in growth in mathematics by a wide margin. And again, this is just the beginning. We recognize that this is hard work, where there will be more bumps along the way, certainly, but we're very proud of the efforts that this district has obtained this year in the MCAS. Our goal, for those of you recall, and the turnaround plan in the first year of receivership, was to double the amount of schools that were hitting growth over 50 in both math and English. The reality is, we almost tripled that number. Our goal was to double it, we almost tripled it. We went from three schools that had growth over 50 in both math and English in 2012 to eight schools that did it this way. When you break it down just by individuals, we had four schools in 2012 that had growth over 50. In 2012, we had nine schools in 2013. So, a difference from four to nine, more than double the amount of schools. In mathematics, we quadrupled the number of schools that were closing the achievement gap, going from four to 16 from one year to the next. So, very positive numbers to report, more hard work ahead. This is a very important slide for us. We actually doubled the number of Level 1 schools this year. Last year, as you recall, we had the Frost Middle School in the southeast Lawrence East Elementary School, I always get that confused, and I apologize, were our two Level 1 schools. This year, we've added two more. We've added the Gilmet Elementary and the Wetherby School. Those principals are here today, so we can recognize them, and you could take a photo with them, I hope. And we think we're on pace to have more schools enter in this designation in the future. A different way to look at that is how many students are attending what the state deems its Level 1 schools, which are its best schools in the state. And we had 1,000 kids last year attend. We have well over 2,000 kids attending these Level 1 schools this year. And so, as a percentage of our students in the district, that makes up to about 17% of our students are now in top-performing schools in Lawrence. Obviously, that's still a low number. We've got a long way to go, but it's an initial positive sign for what we're doing. When you look at it this way, we look at Level 1 schools and combine them with the interventions we've taken at some of our lowest-performing schools, where we assign those schools to high-quality, proven providers. We have almost a third of our kids in, we think, excellent academic programs, and we believe that on top of this, we have other schools that have the capacity and ability to get to Level 2 and Level 1 in the coming year. So, we're pretty excited about that. But it's not just about test scores. What you've seen in this district is the graduation rate has risen sharply. Kids graduating in four years has gone from a low in 2010 to 46.7%. To this past year, it was 60.6%. And the new number will be coming out in a month or two, and we believe that number will be even higher. So, once again, the graduation rate is up significantly. At the same time, the dropout rate is down significantly. Again, you saw a dropout rate in 2009 of almost 10%. That number is down under 6% this past year, and we believe it could be down under 5% when the new numbers come out in December. So, the news is positive today. When you look at it, the MCAS scores and absolute performance, you'll see that our CPI, which is a composite performance index, went up 0.3 points from 71.4 last year to 71.7. This is growth, but it's not all the growth we had hoped for. We're looking, as we said before, to try to move even more kids into proficiency. The math growth was much more substantial, where the kids went from 59.7 to 66.6. And the PPI, which is a reflection of kind of a cumulative district performance, went up from 60 to 65. This is a very strong indicator, not just of English, math, science, but progress and performance as it relates across the district. So, we're very pleased to see all these indicators going in a positive direction. People want to know what contributed to the success. I would say the great people working in the schools, the kids, the parents, the school committee, who did the hard work of going out and enlisting parents in the process for the turnaround. We also cited some other things that I think are involved. Reforming the curriculum has been a top priority for us here. Using data to assess our students, not treating them all the same, but actually looking at each individual kid and seeing what skills they're lacking and getting them those skills has been kind of a hallmark of what we're doing. We said, talked earlier about the vacation academies, where over 1,000 kids in February and 1,000 kids in April gave up their vacations to get extra tutoring with some of our best teachers was certainly a factor. I always believed that adding the arts and enrichment program and the sports has been positive for our kids and has helped them buy in more to the school process. I know that I, myself, perhaps wasn't always the best student, but was more interested in academics when it was combined with sports. And so, I think we're seeing the fruits of those labels. We're also seeing, I think, a lot more flexibility at the school level, and principals being able to do the interventions that they need, teachers being able to plan accordingly, and that's part of decentralizing the school system. The school committee will recall that we went through some tough changes last spring, where we reduced the size of central office by one-third. Almost 26 positions have been cut. And that's hard, because, you know, it's a change in philosophy, but the philosophy is pretty simple, that we need to put our resources down at the school level to pay for things like textbooks, to pay for things like expanded, a longer day for our elementary school kids, to pay for all the things that we think are better served at the individual school level and not having a large bureaucratic central office. At the same time, what's left of central office has had to pivot, and I've asked them to change their perception away from where we're kind of a compliance organization to where we are servants of the schools, that our job is to make the schools' lives easier. And that's a work in progress, but we're pretty pleased by what we've seen so far. And then, the last thing, I think, which is a factor, is the fixing of the school buildings. This work is not done. We spent well over $2.5 million over the last 18 months to try to fix our buildings. We believed if we don't, we'd have in excess of over $10 million in problems in the next few years. So, that work continues, and I would ask for your continued support as we make sure that our kids have an adequate and quality educational environment from which our kids can learn in. I think some of the fixes we've seen at the Leonard School, at the LTU, the Lawrence Teacher Union Partnership School, where many of you volunteered to help paint, I mean, I think those makes a dramatic difference in the quality of education for our kids. And so, that work will continue. And that's the kind of highlight overview. We'll be sending you more information as it becomes available. We're still breaking down individual school stuff. We'll be getting the school committee more individual school information. I could spend several hours tonight. I appreciate that, Mr. V, but I won't do that to you. I'm already in trouble for making my meetings go too long, calling out all the different schools and some of the successes that they've had. And we'll try to bring you people throughout the year. But with that said, I'd like to open it up to this group and see what questions, if any, you have.
You said that you'll get the individual school numbers. For growth, specifically in math, I mean, for a 17-point jump, that's pretty broad across the entire district, I would assume. So, how many schools didn't improve or negatively?
I think, I don't have the data at my fingertips, but I think it was something like 24 out of 26 schools went up in math, and I want to say 16 out of 26 schools went up in English. Some of the other schools were flat, and only a small handful were down a tick. But no one, no one lost any ground. This is actually a great point by Mr. Blatchford. One of the bigger accomplishments is that this year, no new Level 4 schools were declared in Lawrence. That is, no schools were deemed to be in the turnaround category, and that is due to the hard work and success of these schools.
For Level, I saw that we had Level 1, so increase in that. Did we have an increase in Level 2 at all?
I think everyone else stayed flat. These are cumulative scores, and it takes some time. Remember, you get bounced out if you miss one subgroup. But what you'll see is, if the schools have another year of this, you'll see more of these schools drop into Level 2, and maybe even some drop into Level 1. The Wetherby, for instance, and I think Gilmet Elementary School were both Level 3 schools last year, and did so well that they jumped all the way to Level 1. And some of that was cumulative, but some of it also was the strength of their scores this year. So, I think you'll see more folks go into Level 2 next year.
And so, what's the growth potential currently? So, if they continue on the same path, do we expect to double our number again, or is it just two more schools?
You know, I'm not sure I'm ready to make any predictions on that yet. We will try to give you something more probably in February, after we do some more data analysis. Obviously, we're hoping to continue to improve all the time. We've got a long way to go. This is a great opening, first step, but it's just that, it's just a step. And there's a lot more work to be done. You know, I couldn't be more proud of the work of this district, but I also have to recognize that, you know, our kids deserve the same kind of education that a suburban kid gets, and we're not there yet. Our scores aren't there yet, and our kids can do this. So, we've got miles to go before we sleep.
And the CPI for math and English? So, that's just kids going into proficiency?
No, it's a composite performance index. So, they give you different points. If you get proficient or advanced, they'll give you 100 points. If you get high needs improvement, you'll get 75, low needs improvement 50, high warning 25, and low warning 0. And what they do is they take each kid's score and then add them, aggregate them, and then divide by the number of students for an average.
And in comparison to other districts, how are we doing on that?
You know, I'm assuming, just from all the other data we've seen, that we're in a good position. We haven't crunched the other district's data yet. We're in the process of doing all of that work. We've given you some indication of how we compared to other comparable districts, and we seem to be outpacing them, both in English and in mathematics right now.
And last question-
And because of that growth, you'll see the absolute CPI track that way as well.
Last question being, how many, because I know there's a scholarship, the Abigail Adams Scholarship-
Yes.
That, how big was that increase? Because I mean, there has to be that kind of increase with the amount of numbers that we have.
So, I think we saw particularly strength at the high school. The high school had another really strong year, and our numbers say that over 97 kids are getting the Abigail, Abadham Scholarship, which, as you may or may not know, is, it was in your packet, I don't know if folks had time to read it, but basically, it provides for free tuition for kids in the UMass system, which is a tremendous accomplishment. And in these financial times, for kids to get those scores and, you know, earn that scholarship is tremendous. It was obviously lower last year, I feel like it was in the 60s, and so, to go from the 60s to the 90s is fantastic for our kids and sets them on a path of no college debt and better, a better life trajectory, not being burdened by the debt that comes with going to college.
It's actually not just UMass systems, just, it's all state schools. So, it's actually, it's a much, much better option for kids, not just a couple of schools.
Yeah, and we can go through the, we've got the criteria in the packet, and we might want to do a separate event on that sometime in this district, not on a school committee format or something else to recognize the kids, because we are seeing greater numbers. This actually speaks to Mr. Pavel Pajano's point about getting more kids ready for the SAT and other things, and that's, you know, we're going to start producing kids that are much more academically oriented and ready for higher-level education, and we've got to make sure that we give them the services they need to be ready for that.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Riley. How are you today?
I'm fine, Mr. Vittorioso. How are you, sir?
I'm sorry, I missed your age by one year, sir.
That's okay. It's not the age, it's the miles, Mr. V.
I have a lot of math at my 55th reunion last Saturday.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, I made it. Now, I project that this system is a 10, 80, 10. 10% of the students are superb, 80% are middle-class like me, and 10% need special needs. Now, all these students, these 10%, I have said it before, they're the ones that are the easiest to teach, they come in with a different attitude, and we don't all come to the table with the same appetite. Now, I got to congratulate these four principals, Principal Frost Middle School, South Lawrence Elementary, Gilmet, and Wetherby. Now, my question is, and I think there's no answer to it, why are these four schools up on Level 1? Is it that the principals have superior minds and engage their faculties and make them better? I just don't understand, when Lawrence has around maybe 20 schools, that four are outstanding. That bothers me. I don't see any rhyme or reason why four schools, and I got to congratulate the leaders that are here, they're doing something that the other schools aren't, or hate to say it, they're more superior in their knowledge than the other principals. And I'll say it, it bothers me when you have four schools out of the number of schools that you have students so proficient, they get up here, we can mention them, but the other schools are mired in muck.
Well, let me respectfully disagree with that. I mean, I think what you've seen from this presentation tonight is growth across the school district. And in fact, while we're here, part of what we'll do tonight is recognize the schools that have made it to Level 4. We saw many other schools improve at great, at a great rate, and I think you're going to see more of these Level 1 schools in the future. And so, I wouldn't write them off yet, Mr. V. I think you give us a few years, we're going to have a lot more of these schools.
I don't know if I'll be around in a few years.
V, we believe in you. We think you're going to be here for the next 20 years.
Well, I doubt that, but thank you very much. The point is, again, and I'm not making a very good point, I can't see why four principals are in schools that are superior and the rest are struggling. I just don't understand that. Is it the principals, they're so dynamic that they inspire, or their students are better prepared when they come into these four schools? That bothers me. You have more, it really bothers me, the Frost, Ms. Reynolds, I've known her for years, excellent, excellent. This South Lawrence Elementary, I don't know the lady. The Gilmet Lori Butterfield, she's superb. Wetherby Colleen, they're superb, but why, what do their students have that the other schools don't? And that bothers me.
I would say, Mr. V, that the other schools are going to get there. I believe it in my heart. I've seen a lot of great work, I've seen a lot of great teaching, and I've seen a lot of great leaders, and I think we're going to get there, but these things take time, Mr. V.
Can you give me a definitive answer, so I can tell God not to take me? A definitive answer?
So, you can tell who not to take you? God not to take you?
Oh, I hope so. I hope I go there with my parents. But the point, they're not being joked. You say time, I say time, time is important. When are you predicting, two years, five years, 10 years? What is your prediction?
My prediction is, we're going to have more Level 1 schools in the next two to three years.
I'll stick around.
I appreciate that. We need you, Mr. V. We can't do this without you.
Oh, sure, you can. You have this lady coming on, she's marvelous.
Okay.
But the point, the point is this, and I know you know this, all the children in the city of Lawrence don't come to school with the same brain power. That's why you've got your ABCs and Ds. And my point is, and I'm believing, why are these four principals, their schools up there? What are they doing that the other schools are not doing? That's my point. What are they doing?
If I could take that one. I think they are doing it, and I think they're on their way. I mean, we had two schools jump from Level 3 to Level 1. I mean, that's a huge improvement. I mean, how many schools do we have in Level 4, 5? How many of those are potentially going to be out of Level 4 next year?
Many of them.
I think that, I think that they're on their way. It's just a much longer process than instant gratification, unfortunately.
I'm going to say to you, Jimmy DeYounger, you give me a definite date and I'll stick around, and I'll buy you and your future wife the best dinner you ever had. I like timeframes. I don't like this, that. I like timeframes, Jim.
We're going to come back to you and give you some more definitive answers. We're going to have more good schools for you, Mr. V, okay? We need you to stick around.
Well, that I will, and the same offer goes to you as to Jimmy DeYounger. Dinner at the best restaurant I know, if you don't, your predictions don't come true.
What is the best restaurant you know? Kentucky Fried Chicken? What are you talking about?
I'm talking in Boston, the Italian area.
Oh, the North End?
The Italian area I know well.
All right, I live in that area.
I say we give them a date, Jeff.
Italian area is the best. And Amalfi Trifettoria in Salem, New Hampshire is about the best Italian restaurant around.
Fair enough. You know, they won't let me eat the fast food anymore, Mr. V, you know, so I've got to eat healthy.
Well, I'll get permission from your wife for one day. We get a one-day reprieve.
We wish you luck with that endeavor. Thank you.
And Jimmy, you got to remember, with all the problems that the Gilmet has suffered through the past couple of years, for them to go from Level 3 to Level 1 is amazing strides with all the problems in that building.
Oh, yeah, Ms. Butterfield's done a nice job, but that's not the point. That school has had more physical damage done to it than any other school. People should be sued, people should be going to jail, and the city should be getting money back. That school is a disaster.
I agree with you.
I taught there. And how they got away with it, only God knows, and thank God it's not only my money.
Well, we're pleased to report that we believe the work has been fixed, and the building got a clean bill of health, and after many years, we look like we're in good shape in that building, but we're going to continue monitoring the building to make sure that no other problems-
And I also know these lawsuits, Attorney Allen, I forget her name, she's working for the city, she's excellent, but she's been working on it for five, six years.
Well, to be continued at future meetings. Let's, let me give you a few other things that-
Superintendent, may I interrupt you?
Yes, ma'am.
Time to take a deep breath. First of all, I want to commend you and your staff, as well as the schools, for these awesome scores. I understand they're baby steps, we've made growth, and this is something that we're moving forward. So, I think in the long run, we need to celebrate all the success of the district so far. Just another question for you. How, what plan do you have for the district to prepare for the new testing that's coming down the road? I saw brief comments that you made in the TRIB, but I was just wondering, is there a plan in place?
Indeed, there is, and that plan has already been enacted as of this past year. So, as many of you know, the state is moving away from the MCAS. In the Eagles Tribune, I shared that I was cautiously optimistic, but I had some reservations about that. As someone that's worked professionally under the MCAS, I find this test to be incredibly rigorous and sets a high bar for our kids to reach. And with this PARC test, which is going to be more of a national test, I've had concerns that it may not be as rigorous as the MCAS test. I've been told that that is not the case, that it will be as rigorous, but I guess time will tell. With all of that said, as we migrate towards the Common Core, which is how you look at the new standards, and the PARC assessments, we've begun to reform our curriculum to look at that. When we came in 18 months ago, we recognized pretty early on that a lot of our curriculum materials were outdated. And so, while that's unfortunate, and it's going to cost us a lot of money to fix, this is the right time to make that change and to move towards this new PARC assessment, and so, we have the right curriculum materials for our kids for the next 10 years. And so, that work will be, is ongoing. We've already begun to embed some of the standards that will be assessed on PARC and have been assessed as kind of test matrix questions in the tests this past year and next year as well. We'll also probably be piloting some PARC assessments at some of our schools this year, and then we're going to have to make a decision the following year. I think the following year, the commissioner gives you the opportunity to choose to stay on the MCAS for one more year or to move to the Common Core PARC assessment. And we're going to have to make a decision on what to do, whether we want to be early adopters or we want to do another year of the MCAS. So, that's foreshadowing down the future, but we're already taking steps to address that going forward.
Thank you.
Question about the perk, just quickly. Who designed it, and was there any influence from our state education essentially?
I think the commissioner's been a champion and been heavily involved in the creation of the PARC assessments, and so, they've sent a team from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to be heavily involved with our input. In the past, what's happened is individual states were allowed to create their own assessments. None, in my opinion, were as rigorous as the Massachusetts Assessment, the Comprehensive Assessment System, which is why we, the commissioner, I believe, got involved to make sure that this was as rigorous, if not a more challenging test for our kids, because we didn't want a simpler and easier test. What I think we will see happen across this country as other states adopt this is that other states who had given their children a much easier test are suddenly, and were told their parents, you know, 70% of your kids are proficient or advanced, are suddenly going to take this test and find out, well, maybe only 30% of your kids are actually proficient or advanced when you're compared to other folks. I do not believe Massachusetts will have that same problem, because our kids have already been working under a very rigorous Comprehensive Assessment System, except in social studies, for the last 10-plus years.
Superintendent-
Yes, Mr. V.
Theoretical question, sir.
Okay.
You have 100 kids that take the MCAS test, and 100 of them score well. Does that ensure that they're going to be successful in life? 100 taking, 100 pass?
I don't think so. I think what I've seen is that children need to have the academic background, certainly, but there are other things that are important that don't show up on a test. up on a test. Being able to speak publicly, being able to work with people in groups, you know, hard work, motivation, persistence. Those things don't always show up on a test. So there are obviously other life skills. This is what schools are typically looked at. One of the reasons we've tried to add extra enrichment opportunities, things like debate league or musical theater, where a kid has to get up in front of 500 kids and sing a song, is we're trying to teach kids to have this full background, so that they can participate in the workplace when they get older.
Another theoretical question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. Why did the commissioner, and I'm sure the ones under him, require MCAS to be passed to graduate? Why was that made a requirement? I know several kids over the years that just didn't pass, they never went back to, and they're out in left field, they have no diploma.
That's a federal requirement, if I'm not mistaken.
It's a federal requirement, it's not from Malden.
But it was adopted by the state before the federal stuff came in. But let me say this to you, Mr. V. Currently, 10th graders in Massachusetts have a pass rate in the MCAS well into the mid-90s, even the high 90s. So while that is true, that some kids don't meet this requirement, I think the vast majority of kids do. But let me go back, and I can't speak for the commissioner, but I can speak for myself, and I can speak as a parent with two children in, in a city urban school system, and from my experience as a teacher and counselor, assistant principal, and beyond, for a long time in city schools, our kids weren't challenged to the same degree as everybody else, and there was no way to measure that. And so a teacher could spend an inordinate amount of time but not teaching the kids what they needed to know. This kind of set the bar the same for everybody, and our kids deserve the American dream. Some of you know, my great-grandmother, Ella Kelleher, was born and raised and was a, worked in the mills here in Lawrence many, many years ago, when the Irish came through. And they got a great school system, and they had the chance for the American dream. Our kids today deserve that same dream. And so our kids need to be assessed in the same way as everybody else. And we need to know that our kids can perform as well as everybody else. And so that's kind of my opinion about why we do this.
Oh, I agree with you. I agree with you. Everybody deserves a chance. Now, if they don't take it, that's their problem.
Okay. Could, I'd like to just finish a few things, then we'd like to recognize and let you guys take some photos and give some certificates out to these level-one principals. This year, we had 32 perfect MCAS scores in the district. This is up from the mid-20s last year, or low 20s, kids that got a perfect score. We also had 169 children who hit a 99 percentile in growth, which means almost 200 kids did better than virtually everyone else in their peer group in the state. So that, just, you know, the numbers are just very impressive in the different ways you look at them. And we're gonna honor some of our kids today. A few of our kids came, and we're gonna honor students who showed that improvement. We could honor a lot of different kids, right? We could honor our perfect scores, and, and maybe we'll do that in the future. But today, we're gonna honor our kids who worked hard and improved. With that said, I'd like to offer another highlight for the district. The Oliver Partnership School won a video contest, and they won the Big Lots Award, which is a $2,000 grant. They were able to go to Big Lots recently and pick up that check, which they'll use to start their school. You know their school is newly started in, across the way. And so I hope you, if you haven't had a chance to visit that school, that you take the time to visit it. Hi.
So did you want to see a video?
Oh, do we have the video?
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna show you a brief video of this.
Hi, my name is Shawna Hamilton. I'm a second-grade teacher at the Oliver Partnership School, and we're so excited to have won the Big Lots competition. Now, we have money for a new library, and I brought some students here to tell you what they did to get the votes. Can you introduce yourselves?
Hi, my name is Melissa Fuentes. I'm in fourth grade, and I'm really excited that we won the Big Lots contest.
Hi, I'm Jamison Sanchez. I'm in fourth grade, and I'm nine years old, and it's kind of fun having $3,000 for the school.
Hi, my name is Diego Bravo. I'm in first grade, and I'm 10, I'm 11 years old. I'm so happy that we won the contest.
I just want to thank everybody for voting. It's excellent that we have $3,000 now to start our new library. We're very excited. So again, the Oliver Partnership School, thanks everyone for taking the time to vote for our school.
Roll the video!
Legends tell us the tale of a secret treasure hidden somewhere in the Oliver Partnership School. Our band of intrepid adventurers set off on a quest to find the treasure.
We need your help!
Let's go, look!
No books. What are we gonna do without any books?
Look, look at this!
I can't believe we found the book!
Yes, that's right. Kids are excited over a book. That's because there aren't enough books for everyone to enjoy. We need your votes, so we can bring more books into our school and have a library in every classroom.
Once again, congratulations to the school and the kids who helped put that together. They were able to get just shy under $3,000 to buy books at their school, so we're very...
Good for them.
Very thrilled to be able to do that for them, particularly as they move to their new building.
My alma mater.
At this time, we'd ask the following level-one principals to come up and take a photo and get a certificate from the school committee. Ellen Baranowski from the Frost Middle School, Marissa Boasian from the South Lawrence East Elementary School, Lori Butterfield from the Gilmet Elementary School, and Colleen Lennon from the Weatherby School. We thank them for coming. Hello, will you do the honors? I promised them we wouldn't keep them late tonight. Remember, they're...
They have school tomorrow.
They have school tomorrow, that's right.
And that's much more important than this meeting. Much more important.
I'm the reader. You have to stand back until your name is... Well, what do you know? Ellen Baranowski, Frost Middle School. Congratulations.
Next, Marissa Boasian, South Lawrence East Elementary.
Lori Butterfield, Gilmet Elementary.
Last but not least?
Wait a minute. Yeah, I guess it's Colleen Lennon, Weatherby School.
So if they could stand with the school committee, so for a photo, principals, if you could get in with the school committee? I'll take that for you. All right, Dave, you sort them out.
Yeah, nice and close.
Not too close.
Folks stand right up in front here. Good-looking people in front.
Oh, you've got me. Boy, you're a, you've got a job for life.
Okay, here we go.
Cheese!
Level one.
Great, thank you. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Oh, you're sitting down, but we have more rewards to give out. We've asked three of our students who had some of the highest improvement in the Lawrence Public Schools. We've asked them to come and get a certificate from you. Alan Torribio. Kyavet Guzman. And last but not least, Edward Ramos.
Where's Ramos left?
He might've had to go to his thing. That's okay. We'll get it to him. We can get a photo, please?
I know it.
We're gonna try to get you in the paper, Mr. Vittorioso.
Oh, that'll be a dam.
If not, you'll be in the front of the website tomorrow morning. How about that?
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So a few other updates before we move to final questions and public participation. We've asked Lynette Haredia, who's done such great work with robots at the high school, to help us form a Lego League at the middle-grade level. And I believe we have seven schools that are going to participate? Five? Eight? Oh, eight schools that are gonna be signing up for the Lego League, where our kids will have a chance to build the Legos and the robots that come with it. This is part of our STEM effort, which will continue, and to help better prepare our kids for science, technology, engineering, and math as they get to high school and beyond. So we want to thank them. The last thing on my agenda, which I wanted to talk to you about, is the central office lease. That lease will be coming due a year from this coming January, and we need to make some decisions about the direction that we're going to go. My recommendation at this time is to start a working group and ask Mr. Cirillo and Mr. Payano if they'd be willing to co-chair that group, and work with some teachers, parents, administrators, and others to determine our needs going forward and make a recommendation on what we're trying to do. This is one working group that we're gonna start. We certainly will have other working groups, where we'll be asking other members of the school committee for their time, if they have it, to, to work on some of these additional projects. There's a lot that has to go on when you make a decision like this. Clearly, we do not have as many people in central office as we have in the past, and so the question is, is there other space in the district that we could use? Should we use less space here? Should we try to go to another building, and what have you? And it's very complicated, and so we're gonna put a working group together. Any school committee member that wants to be on that working group can be on it, and we will have other groups in the future where I'm gonna ask folks to, to sign up. Mr. Cirillo Isar coming in today. Mr. Payano, I was gonna spring this on him, but in essence, we're gonna appoint him as the co-chair if he has the time, recognizing that he is busy with law school. If not, we'll ask somebody else.
Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Finterriff, but at one time, the superintendent's office and all the staff was on the fourth or fifth floor of Lawrence High School, and that was enough space. And you don't have to pay an enormous amount of money. I would suggest that you and your cohorts look at it, because the way people are leaving the central office, that should be more than enough room for you and what you have to do up there. And outside of that, it would save the city a ton of money. So I would recommend that you look into that.
Well, we appreciate your input, and we hope that you'll avail yourself of that input as well when this working group gets together. I would ask Lynette Haredia to come up briefly to talk about the Lego League and her hopes and dreams for that program.
Oh, I love Legos. One of my first toys.
It should work, yeah.
All right, good evening. My name's Linda Haredia. I'm a math teacher at the Math, Science, and Technology High School. I'm also the robotics advisor. First of all, I wanted to thank you all for your support of the robotics team. We actually won our competition last year in Merrimack, New Hampshire, which was a great way to end our season. Our first, one of our many goals is outreach, especially in the middle schools, to promote not just the team, but also to get the younger kids thinking about the fields of science and technology. So I'd like to share a new initiative called the Lancer Lego League. We would have one team from every middle school, and the teams would build a robot that competes pre-designed challenges using Lego Mindstorm technology, which gets them thinking about programming and coding. They also apply real-world math-science concepts. When we visited the Bruce and the Frost schools, previously, we had huge success. The students were very engaged, and they really wanted to get involved in a program like this. So we would like to start the initiative in November, with the culminating experience being a competition in the spring held at Lawrence High School. And again, we just wanna celebrate their accomplishments throughout November to the spring. It's a great opportunity for students of Lawrence, because it teaches them the importance of teamwork. I know Superintendent Riley talked about this earlier. Teamwork, problem-solving skills, communication skills. They're gonna be presenting to judges, critical thinking skills, but more importantly, they're having fun. It's hands-on, and they're meeting new people in an environment that's very conducive to learning. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
I have a question, young lady. When did this all take place? During class time? I mean, the experimentation put in place together, is it part of curriculum, or is it extracurricular activities?
Extracurricular activity. It would, it would take place after school. We were looking at maybe two hours a week. We were talking about whether a teacher wanted to do it one day a week for two hours, or two days a week for an hour after school.
And where would this take place in the high school? I know the high school is massive. Do you have it set up with all these Legos and everything? A certain place that it would take place in the high school?
So this is going to the middle school levels?
Oh, it's going to the middle school. What's middle school is that?
All of them.
All of them.
My alma mater.
Indeed.
My alma mater.
If there's an opening, we'll try to get you a seat.
I will be more than appreciative of that. Maybe I can build some Lego toys, 'cause I was good at that.
All right.
Maybe you can come help us out.
It'd be my pleasure, young lady, and thank you.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Take some final questions from the board before we move to public participation.
Go ahead. I yield to the junior member.
Do we, we gonna get a breakdown? When are we gonna get the breakdown of the individual schools and their scores? I'm particularly interested in Sparks Academy and Unlocking Potential.
You should have that breakdown within the next two weeks. I know that both scores performed very well in mathematics. I don't have the data at my fingertips, but they both had a strong year for mathematics.
Ms. Riley, I was watching the educational channel, and you had this guy on there. He must've been on for three hours. And he had the children behind him. I think they were from the Oliver... How many schools now have been broken up into their own entities? How many schools in Lawrence Public School system that have children in them?
All of our schools have children in them. Do you mean like we're split up in two? Like the Frost was...
Yes. How many schools are we talking about?
We have approximately 30 schools, depending on how you code some of the programs, you know, the, you know, Adult Learning Center and things like that, the Early Childhood Centers.
Sir, you have rented mill space, have you not?
We've had to for the alternative high school, that's correct. And you will recall that at our last meeting, we shared the enrollment continues to grow. We're at over 13,500 children, which is more than was expected, and more than was projected, and we assume that number will continue to go higher.
You have brought up that point, sir, many times, that I don't know who will be here, but in four or five years, you're gonna have a crunch of students, and you'll be here to take care of it. And I have the full faith and credit of the United States behind you.
Thank you, Mr. Vittorioso. Any final comments from the group?
Jeff, I just have a question, and I don't know whether you've mentioned it to us or not. Any date when the Parent Center will be opening?
Somebody say yes behind me? No, he did. I, I think it's going to be opening the first week in December, but it's, it's semi-operational right now. It's what I would call a soft opening. We're having parents come now, but we're hoping in the first week in December.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have a question. Financing-wise, we haven't received any exorbitant amounts of extra money in the district. That being said, there are potential cost-saving measures that we can do, like green... That being said, there are potential cost-saving measures that we can do, like green energy, solar panels, things like that. What is the possibility of us getting that extra money for that? So it is, it is an improved investment in our system, but in the long run, it actually ends up saving us money.
My recommendation is that we put together a capital improvement campaign for this school district, and we've kind of been working on that, big-picture-wise, just because of all the issues that have come up. But it's certainly a working group that, you know, we would value if you wanted to chair it and help us with that. I believe that we're going to need to take these measures, particularly given our space crunch and the cost of utilities these days continues to go up. And so these kind of measures, while good for the environment, are actually cost savings now. The technology is developed such that, much like some of these hybrid vehicles, where they're almost the same as a regular car cost, but they give you better mileage. And so I think we're at a tipping point now where we prudent to invest in those things. It also is going to be incumbent upon this district to go out and try to get those grants, because there are grants that do that. They're very competitive, but something we need to look forward to in the coming days.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to move to public participation. I see Mr. Vittorioso, your name is on the list.
I beat Mr. Molly.
All right.
I jumped him at the pass. I want to congratulate the new school committee woman who's going to take over my job, Ms. Ortiz. I wish her the best. I wrote your name in, Ms. Ortiz. I don't want any favors, I wrote your name in. Good evening, my fellow Laurentians and my good friends on this school committee. I will miss all of you. I only have three more school committee meetings to go, and I, too, will fade into history.
I think it's two, Mr. V.
Two, that's right. I may not be here for Christmas, it depends. In my twelve years on this august group, I kept my word. I never took a field trip, as I promised in 1983. No out-of-state trips, no trips down to the Cape. I didn't spend a dime of the money that the hard citizens of Lawrence put into this community. I've had the privilege of knowing many, many good people concerned with improving the education system for Lawrence's only hope. That's you. That's you. Maybe not you, the rest of you. While at the University of New Mexico, my professor, the great Dr. Irma Schuster, PhD, University of Missouri, told me in one of her courses that the most powerful union in this country is the teachers' union. We want more money. We love the children. I love the children, too, but I can't place more than one in my house. It's one of the oldest hogs going, "For the children." What would the children do if they didn't have schooling, teachers and administrators that loved them? How many times you heard this? It is, "The children are future leaders." Over 150 million people, teachers, parents, et cetera, make up the biggest public... I'm stuck for words, union in the world. They want the races, they're for the children. How many children can you have? When I graduated in 1958, the Lawrence, the Massachusetts schools were in the top ten for math and science. Now they're in the bottom twenty when it compares to the rest of the world. Our future is the children, but isn't it funny, a lot of people use the children, and you know what I mean. You people in the heart of me, you're not stupid. I don't talk to stupid people. You are brilliant, much smarter than the school committee person. Again, let me repeat, in 1958, when I graduated, we were in the top twenty in this country in math and science. Now we're in the low twenties. I want to thank all my friends for allowing me to serve twelve years. Remember, it is for the children, our kids, our future, our only chance. How many, how many in education are our kids, our future, our future? Now I copy something down, I hope I can find it. From the final analysis...
Thirty seconds.
...our most basic common, well, time is up. God bless you all, have a happy day.
Mr. Molly, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Good evening, honorable member of the Lawrence School Committee. When Honorable Mayor Lantigua, in rescuing 13,000 children of Lawrence Public School, went to Commissioner Chester, arrival of the Honorable Superintendent Raleigh, Lawrence Public School is moving forward. We, as the citizen, demand of you, support our teachers and their wonderful union. Our teachers, three years before arrival of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh, have been beat out any contract. We need to create a good contract for our teachers. Our teachers are best reason for improving our MCAS, MCAS performance. Our schools and our children need support of our teachers. Our teachers have the creation of the cabinet in order our teacher can be speaking boldly without fear of any principles are important. We need to remind you, in our city, the teachers, such as Mr. Mendez, has dedicated his life for Lawrence High School. We want him come back to our Lawrence Public School. Supporting the turnaround plan is support of our teachers. The most important reason to have success for the turnaround plan is support of teachers and their union. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molly. That concludes this October 1st School Committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.